So again, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilor Drayer?
President.
Councilor Irvin?
Here.
Councilor Fleck?
Here.
Councilor Meridah?
Here.
Councilor Savage?
Here.
Councilor Stenning? Mayor Solzmann?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying it's so nice to see a full house tonight. Thank you for everyone coming out for your concerns for our city. Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens. This is a time for citizen comment. The council will first take comments addressing items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. The council will then take comments addressing action items on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name, identify whether they are a city resident, and if so, their ward. Please limit comments to three minutes or less with the council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of the citizens' comments. Brenda Sawyer?
My name is Brenda Sawyer. I live in town 640 South Third Street. Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the Peace Through Unity Committee, I would like to extend a warm welcome to you and all the citizens of the city to attend the official dedication of the peace pole in Corner Park. It will be Saturday, July 20th at 1 o'clock at the site of the peace tree and pole. There will also be a community activity making peace flags from noon to 2:00 in the same area. Although it is not completed, the structure is now in place. We look forward to seeing you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randall Lammerman?
Randall Lammerman. I do live in the city limits, Ward 2. You guys are some of my last time. So a couple of quick concerns. We have the St. Vinnie topic coming up tonight, which y'all know. My issue with that being is an ethics issue mainly due to recently Mike was hired as a city manager and it was reported because of the town hall. You guys had already had your mind made up by that point when you did the town hall. So it was basically just a sham meeting to make us think that we had an opinion. That was verified. They came down and slapped you guys on the wrist and said, "We'll retrain you," whatever. Was to make us think it's not the same thing now with St. Vincent's camp issues that you don't already have your mind made up. You're gonna do it whether or not we like it or not. The other issues are actually Savage is passing around flyers saying that the recall is gonna cost more than $15,000, which nobody has an actual number yet. So it's kind of a scare tactic, even though some of them like Drayer are trying to say that they're being bullied and they're not running again or anything like that. But I think from a city council member, Drayer and Savage putting out information like that is a scare tactic to the public, presuming that it's gonna cost us grandiose amount. We don't know how much it's gonna cost. So by doing that, you're going against your ethical duty to put forward truthful and honest information. You're not doing it. That being said, I'm gonna report you to the Ethics Committee because it's not fair what you're doing to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Davis?
Hello. I'm Ron Davis. I've lived outside Cottage Grove for over 50 years and my wife has had a business on Main Street in Cottage Grove for over 40 years. And I've served on the Emerald Peoples Utility District Board of Directors since they began, actually before they began. And I am amazed at how well they've done and that we're pretty soon gonna, our rates are gonna be like 40% below what our predecessor had, which was a private corporation. So we are all about taking care of the people and that's my concern is let's take care of the people. We're all elected people that are supposed to be, you know, we're the bosses of all these people who vote for us and we're supposed to watch out after their interests. I was very concerned about learning that the county had done this deal behind closed doors and that came out in December in which there was a two to three vote. We didn't think that that many commissioners were gonna vote for it, but just barely got through. Its impact has already been on the taxpayers. They bought a piece of land, the county did, for 1.5 million to put a private corporation on it and do something that's already been done successfully for three decades at the dump by Emerald Peoples Utility District, which costs the county nothing, actually made them money. With this particular situation, they're gonna spend 1.5 million for a piece of property. Then they found out they bought the wrong piece of property and is not zoned properly. So now they're paying $200,000 to have it rezoned some way. How are you gonna rezone it? I don't know. That's, I guess, it's twisted. But the new contract or the contract that they originally passed was challenged by the waste haulers because they're seeing their rates are gonna be go up for the next, every year for the next five years and at the dump the rates are gonna go up. So they challenged it. They had a law firm look at it. Law firm said it was illegal contract. So now the county is redoing the contract behind closed doors, not revealing what's going on. I asked it, "Do we get to vote for that?" They said, "No, it's already been approved." Well, the other contract has, not this one. So I would suggest that you guys get together, represent the people who elected you, put pressure on the county commissioners to reverse this thing and stop doing it before it costs any more money because it's gonna have a huge impact of potentially $150 million. And it's not gonna, it's not a proven technology that they're doing. Whereas what we've been doing for three decades with Emerald has been proven and we've been able to do it. So I encourage you, call your elected representative or look onto the website for Emerald Peoples Utility District and you can go down and see a lot of different support stuff.
Thank you.
Okay?
He's speaking about the IMRF, but they just changed the name. I can't remember what the acronym is.
Yeah, they just changed the name to, actually, I think you guys got a printout from the general manager. He said he sent you one.
Oh, it's right here.
Yeah, it's, uh, let's see.
Yeah, it's the
Now it's called Clean Lane.
Yeah.
It used to be called IMRF.
Right.
But now they changed the name to Clean Lane.
Right. Thank you.
They keep doing those kind of things, so don't trust them.
Leah Cooper?
My name's Leah Cooper. I am a resident of Cottage Grove and I'm in Ward 2. So I've been doing a little research since our last meeting and I brought, I have been reading the homelessness memorandum. And there's a couple of things on here I highlighted that I wanted to bring up just in case you guys haven't read through it recently. Guess it's been a little while. First thing that hit me was each community member of Cottage Grove is entitled to a basic level of dignity, respect, wellness, regardless of whether they are housed or unhoused. I don't feel like the housed part of that is being very monitored, I guess. It also says the city's existing resources and staffing alone are inadequate to address the crisis and provide the services, shelter and housing needed to support the people moving out of homelessness or to support the homelessness, I would say. It says on here that staff would monitor the users of the sites for compliance with rules. Park rules are established in the chapter 1224 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code, which I'll get back to that in a minute. At the specific site on 12th Street, which is the one that neighbors my house, it says that there is no vehicle camping allowed, which I have pictures I can show you. There's plenty of vehicle camping going on there. And on the Douglas Street one, I just drove by it. It said that they're only allowed to camp inside the fence. Well, they're not because they're camping in their cars and wherever else. If they're sleeping when they're camping, I don't think they are. The site is divided into 32 marked spots that there is no sanity to what's going on behind that fence. It's very chaotic. The site has easy visibility to monitor, for monitoring by both public safety staff as well as public works crews. There's tarps all over the fence, so if people are monitoring it, they're not doing it from outside the fence and I don't see them doing it inside the fence. And then it says there will be no vehicle camp, vehicle or RV camping in these areas. And the one on 10th Street has a tent camper, like a pop tent camper trailer in there that's covered by a canopy, so it looks like a tent, but it's pretty obvious it's not a tent. And there's other things there that are the same basic deal. They're not following the rules. So do the ordinances for Cottage Grove Municipal Code. These are the ones that I got that I see are issues. No person shall deposit on public or private property rubbish, trash, debris, refuse or any substance that would mar the appearance created stench or fire hazard detract from the cleanliness or safety of the property or would be likely to injure a person, animal or vehicle traveling on a public way. Drive by them, you'll see what you'll see. It's pretty obvious. Accumulation of debris and materials. No person shall allow, cause, permit or suffer any old or scrap copper brass pipe rope. Last, a whole bunch of things that I'm sure are there. I don't know. You can accumulate those to mar the to mar the appearance. It's marked. Animals or livestock's running at large. There's definitely a whole herd of dogs over there that are not pinned. No person shall, may use tobacco product, smoke or define chapter or carry any lighted smoking instrument or any, on any city property unless in improperly designated smoking area. So unless those are properly designated smoking areas, they're definitely smoking there. Same thing with alcohol. So I can't go to the park and have a nice relaxing beer, but they can sit over there and get so drunk that they're, you know, I don't know. That just, a couple of the ordinances that are easy things, they're laws that we could require them to follow that are not being followed.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Katie Haynes?
Hi, my name is Katie Haynes. I am a resident of the city in Ward 4. I have, as a Christian person, my heart goes out to people. I love helping people. But when people spit in your face and disrespect you, it's very hard to continue that. And that's exactly what the city has continued to do, specifically this council. You have spent hard-earned money or hard-earned money and you're representing us. We don't appreciate that. Give the shirt off my back to somebody from Cottage Grove that ended up unhoused. It's hard. The rents are skyrocketing over what we earn. Cost of living is skyrocketing over what we've earned. It's very easy to see how someone can become unhoused. Once they're there, yes, let's help them get housed again. It's cheaper to keep them housed and put out those funds and there are resources for that. They just need to know where to look. As far as these homeless camps, I've been against them since the beginning. It was never gonna work. Somebody telling us what our city had to do and at that time we had a manager that was all for, will bow to our governor and do whatever she says. So now we are hearing tonight a proposal from St. Vincent de Paul. St. Vincent de Paul has done this in the past with mixed success. I've been in some of their homeless camps. I would suggest that because of the state of the camps that we have here and the disgusting filth, the safety hazards, it has been allowed to become that way because we didn't have any business getting into managing a homeless camp. We couldn't afford it. Can't afford volunteers to go down there and get threatened. I would say there needs to be rules. We all had to learn that when I was growing up. I taught my kids that. You respect the people who help you. You respect your property. You take care of your property. If we're intending, and this is directed towards those people who are presenting tonight as well, anyone who will, any homeless person who would be moving, I'd say they need to take part in the cleanup of their mess on our property before they're allowed to move and to be given a ticket saying, "Yes, I've helped." No more drugs. No more breaking the law. No more breaking city ordinances. Let's start enforcing some rules. Be more than happy to help them out and they should have a tie to Cottage Grove.
Thank you, Katie. Johanna Zee?
Madam Mayor, Councilors. Mike, this morning I appreciated your honesty on the Beeper Show. I live in Ward 4. My name is Johanna Zee. My main reason for speaking night is, tonight is to continue to offer other solutions to address the egregious consequences of decisions that this council has made. So that pathway that you chose, the housing-first approach, was attempted here in Cottage Grove and instead of the plug being pulled on it a long time ago, it was permitted to fester until people are now standing up and being called a bunch of bullies and a special interest group because they're not happy with the increased crime and the safety issues. This group is growing by the day. So I've read the Supreme Court decision, all what, 74 pages of it, pretty thoroughly now. And I'm aware that HB 3115, written by Oregon Law Center and League of Oregon Cities, will play a part in what action you take moving forward. But across the state, I want you to know that cities have taken different approaches and have had differing results with that. So be aware of not following somebody's recommended approach. So this was a failed experiment, we know, with child prostitution, easy access to hard drugs for our young people and violent crimes, rampant theft, not to mention the fires and it's getting worse. What will it take to get you guys to instruct staff to enforce the current city ordinances and codes? Right? And I ask our chief, what does, you know, what do you need to make this happen? Because we know that your staff is stretched. We know that you guys are incredibly busy. We know that you're constantly busy. So what do you need from us to make that happen? Do we need a citizen patrol until we can get more officers on staff? So many people, including the House, are being victimized and every day this continues. It's on you guys, right? And the longer you do nothing to enforce the laws, the more you are setting this community up for some vigilante-type activity. And here are a few ideas to consider. So bump up that police budget for a temporary time until we can get this under control. Create a citizen task force with enforcement, you know, for, to assist with enforcement and be consistent about it. Work towards opening that jail as soon as possible because we need local accountability. And let's, of course, be compassionate and lawful and give fair warning to occupants of the camps that we're closing the camps, but they'll always have a place to lie, sleep or rest. And by the way, two campers approached me this morning. We had a nice chat and they informed me they do have a place to go when it'd only been there four days. And so this term of involuntary homelessness can certainly be challenged. Start collaborating with groups who actually do want to help folks rather than ones who are enabling and pass an ordinance that says no needle handouts. I mean, that's, so A Dusk of Dawn has been very narrowly described here on a number of occasions and gives people in the public this wrong impression that there's only one way of doing A Dusk of Dawn. You don't have to have one specific site that is staffed. You can make off limits most of the parks and public spaces, leaving a few particular ones that are open for camping at night. And then you can have different areas for people to go during the day. This is working well with cities across Oregon and despite comments that you can't enforce it, you can. And I just want to remind about September 1st is coming around the corner. That means possession of certain amounts of hard drugs as part of Measure 110 reform will be recriminalized. How are we going to enforce that? So please, instead of name-calling, let's open our minds to a small-town approach to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Wrighton? Mr. Wrighton, if you are online, can you please identify your phone number so that we can give you access? We'll go on to action items. All right. All right. Forgive me if I mess this name up. Ken Schwiger? Oh, good.
Mayor, Council and Staff. I'm Ken Schwiger. I'm current president of the Western Oregon Exposition, the WE. I moved to Cottage Grove about 21 years ago after I retired as a chief deputy sheriff after 28 years in law enforcement. And the WE and the Speedway and the Disc Golf Course draw thousands of people to Cottage Grove each year. The WE provides parking, RV hookups and camping for people attending events. They come from Canada to California. We have a responsibility for these people and their property while they are on our grounds. The WE Speedway and the Disc Golf Course get along very well. We help each other and try not to put demands on the city. Council members are also part of our story. I'm sorry that John's not here. I have a photo of him helping put up the flagpole in the middle of that grounds many years ago. And Dana supporting our vendor fairs and setting up your monkey bridge and Lexi and your daughter being afraid of the Easter Bunny. It's all part of our memories that are there. And at every event, we collect food for community sharing. It's something that we make sure we are part of the community. I haven't seen the proposal for the treatment plant settlement yet, but I know of an issue that hasn't been researched and I'm kind of reluctant to give specifics tonight. But the issue is our vulnerability. We are very vulnerable out at the WE. We have a handicapped family living on the grounds. We have mothers and children with a 4H. We have campers who leave their campsites and property to attend the races and depend on us to keep them safe. The hundreds of vehicles parked during the races depend on us to keep them and their property safe. We support nonprofit organizations for their fundraising events and family celebrations out there. Will a low-barrier settlement come with taking responsibility when something goes wrong? And how large of an area is St. Vinnie's going to be responsible for? I kind of looked up low barrier and you see things like possessions, property, partners, sobriety, mental illness. A lot of these things are waived in low barrier. I think it's time to make a tough decision here and just say no.
Thank you. Mr. Wrighton, you have your hand up. Go ahead and speak. Joel? Councilor Irvin?
Given I think that that'll take us over the 30-minute mark. Move that Joel can speak, that we hear him through the end. We'll go beyond 30 minutes.
Yes. Art Lancaster?
I, I'm Art Lancaster. I live in Ward 2. And I'm disgusted. I'm truly disgusted. None of you live in Ward 2. Where are all the camps? They're in Ward 2. And I'm not counting the one that's outside the city limits. We're supposed to be becoming a bike mecca because of our bike path. Where did you put the homeless camp? Right at the head of the bike trail? With their dogs biting people as they go by? The garbage, the needles? Are you gonna put your kids on that bike path? Come on. Get real. Homelessness has not, is not a new thing. It started with gypsies, hobos, all down the line. Years and years. What's the difference? Those people wanted jobs. They were looking for work. They traveled by train any way they could, jumping trains, to go to a different city so they could find a job. Whatever happened to earning your keep? Can anybody tell me? Any ideas? It doesn't have to be said now, but come on, think about it. All we're doing is enabling them to stay where they're at. There are decent people that are there that don't want to be there, but they can't get any help because they're mixed in with the riffraff, the drug users. Nobody wants to deal with them. We have citizens that own homes that have worked their lives for these homes, that have gone to community sharing to get aid because they've lost their job. That business went out of business. But guess what? They go to community sharing and they say it's all gone. We can't help you. Is that right? These people deserve help when they need it as well as the homeless that need it. We gotta stop this. I would like to see a homeless camp in each of your wards, right next to your house.
Thank you, Art. Monique Peppers?
Hello, Mayor. Hello, councilors. Monique Peppers. I live at 437 South Fifth, where I just moved to about a month and a half ago or so. Give or take. I just moved there and so far I've witnessed a robbery because I live directly behind the Bonanza Burger. And I witnessed a robbery there at 1:00 AM on a Saturday night. And then when I went in the next day, because I did call the police, but there was no response really because the person couldn't be. Was covered from head to toe with the mask and the hoodie and the, you know, clothing and the big backpack. Well, when he went in, he he had a small backpack, but when he came out, it was very large. So I had went the next day and let them know that they were robbed. And they said, wow, they said, well, we were robbed last night, too. Two nights in a row, Bonanza Burger was robbed. So they had to go in and spend a bunch of money to revamp their. Video system, surveillance system, their lights, their locks, everything. And so far it hasn't happened again that I'm aware of, which is good. When I moved, just before I moved into the house that I live in now. There's a set of bushes out front and I want to be, before I moved in, thank goodness, because I do have a 10 year old granddaughter who lives with us. There were hypodermic needles in my bushes. Before I moved in, I watched a homeless person stand up on the porch. And eat and do whatever they wanted to do. And then they just threw all the garbage in my bushes. So I've had to deal with cleaning that out as well. There's always this person that passes by on a regular basis screaming at the top of their lungs in the middle of the night. That's been going on. There's a young couple in this town who I'm assuming our boyfriend, girlfriend, I'm not sure. Who fight on a regular basis and have many interactions with the police. I've watched a few of them. Nothing is done about it. They're allowed to just throw cans all over the street, you know, whenever they want in the middle of the night, 1:00 in the morning, outside my bedroom window. Not fun to wake up to that. I mean, it's an endless cycle and it just, it's got to stop, you guys. I stopped using personally the dog park. I used to take my border collie to the dog park all the time. I will not go there now, period. There is too much going on there that is sketchy, to be honest, and I understand not every homeless person is a drug addict or an alcoholic. You know, I understand that things happen in life and sometimes we become homeless and I don't think we should group in the people who aren't. But we need to figure out who those people are and help them, right? Because they didn't do this to themselves. You know, it's just something that happened in life. If they're not on drugs and they're not. Stealing and thieving, you know, yes, they should be treated differently in my eyes. Next, I would like to give a shout out to councillor Mary Day because. I know that we haven't always agreed on certain things, but he was kind enough to come to my house. And pull all the weeds that were there. I mean, it literally, to me, it was kind of a fire hazard and being a person who is disabled and has just been diagnosed with cancer, I could not do it by myself. And he was generous enough to come and spend an entire day at my house. So thank you again.
Thank you, Monique.
I didn't get to finish.
I believe it is Bonnie Sano.
My name is Bonnie Sano. And I have a Cottage Grove address. I would like to refresh your memory about some things that I said back in April of 2022. Build it and they will come. The city manager's plan is not without an intended and unintended consequences. Not the least of which is inviting a bigger problem than Cottage Grove is starting out with. This was before you had a camp. The grapevine works well. Besides the homeless from other areas within the U.S., we will have no border to the South. With the total drop of Title 92, of Title 42. You may end up inviting many times the homeless population than you have now. And with the influx inviting the gangs in both drug and human trafficking. Perhaps even the aiding in destruction of U.S. sovereignty. I urge the council to postpone this decision to consider the taxpayers of Cottage Grove in Lane County. To put this matter to a vote of the people. The slightly less than 400 who attended the town hall were not a consensus of the population of Cottage Grove. When you signed up for city council, you did not sign up for making such far reaching cultural changing decisions as this, I'm sure. Perhaps after the next election, the political governance of Oregon will have a different perspective on the homeless situation than it has now. Perhaps the taxpayers will have a better understanding of where their hard earned money is being spent. Perhaps you will avoid a worse crisis than we already have. That was back in 22. Before a homeless camp was the reality. Yes, build it. They will come. You built it. They came. Are you really happy? Originally, as I recall, the homeless camp was to be for 42 people and they were Cottage Groveans. Housing first, then we will deal with what brought them to this situation. I remember how you bragged that it would be financed by a grant. Build it. They will come, but you will not be happy, I said. Are you really happy with the squalor? The contaminated needles, the expense. The very unhappy neighbors. How many of those housing first have you actually helped over the past two years? Are you really surprised that the citizens of Cottage Grove want to recall the three of you who most advocated for this mess?
Got to wrap it up, Bonnie.
Okay. Can I wrap it up? I want to remind you that everyone. I want to remind everyone that the mayor has only one vote. Back when she was just a councillor, she was the only one I saw to question the wisdom of these camps. In conclusion, I want you to reflect on an occasion not too long ago. When the citizens of Cottage Grove were complaining about their exorbitant water bills. That day, the homeless camp turned on the water full blast and had a slip and slide.
Thank you. Michael Bork.
Hi, my name is Mike Bork. I live in Ward 2. I'm here about, I thought it was for the St. Vinnie's thing. I'm going back to the May 18th meeting. That was a candy, set and done. We all talked prior to that back in December about getting different groups together and talk. Then Dana knows all about that. And we said that we were going to sit down and then the meeting got moved to February, then March. Then it got moved to May where this meeting transpired with your St. Vinnie's coming out and talking about what they were going to do. Which is the same stuff that we're doing right now, which is nothing. I'm sorry. Which is the same thing that is going on now. If you go to a St. Vinnie's camp, a Lowberry camp in Eugene, if you look around there, they have the tents and all that stuff on the outside. If you go around and look at it. So you guys do not bring any outside groups to talk about what would be best for this town. You guys are worried about what's best for you and you alone, but not for the residents of Cottage Grove. And that's been the biggest problem all along. I've been a key supporter of the people that really need help. I want to help them. And that was the first thing on 99 is I wanted it to be a drug free camp, somewhere where people could get a leg up and go forward. We never did that. We just sort of pushed some of the people over there. We never had a chance. And now we have these camps and you're talking about cost for a recall election, maybe 15,000. You're going to have about $500,000 bill just to clean up these two camps with the biohazard that's out there. I know what the costs are. So that's what's going to cost us. So you're going to move it down there to another one. You're going to look at another quarter million dollars cleaned up in two years. That's just the cost that things go on. So I just want you to be aware, I am not in support of St. Vinnie's for here. They were dragged in. Not by the residents or other groups. I think there could have been some very good conversations between everybody about it. But we didn't do that. You just. Put forth your plan and that was it. And that's been the problem with the city council all along. There's a lack of transparency on everything. And I'll leave it at that. You guys have built up our homeless population to a point where we can no longer manage it. And you'll see what the numbers come back at. Thank you for your time. I look forward to this being a city where people can actually have their kids out in the yards and not worry about needles. Or hearing somebody yell and scream profanity down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Lammerman.
Do I have to state everything all over again?
Yes, for the record.
Randall Lammerman, yes, I live in the city ward 2. As I touched on a little bit earlier with the. The camps and everything. Watched a news article earlier. I can't remember the news outlet, but Alex Rayer was talking to one of the. The anchors and the anchor had said that the city of Cottage Grove was partnering with St. Vincent de Paul. That means. That infers that there's already a partnership there, not that they're presenting an opportunity to partner with. My wife and I, we walked into some of the homeless camps, hung out pretty much all day in the middle of the heat. Talked to a. A pretty large group of people. A lot of them didn't want to come out. Honestly, we were a little too clean cut. They didn't want to talk to us. They thought we're. Some of you guys or something. I don't know. But the overwhelming consensus is they didn't want St. Vincent de Paul here. They weren't going to go if the opportunity arose. They thought it was a prison. There's too many rules. We asked, okay, well, if you don't want that, what would you like? Well, we just want a sense of community where we could just do whatever we want. How does that benefit us? They're just going to keep doing what they're doing. You create another camp out there, which creates a health hazard for one, because I don't know about y'all, but. I've driven by there when it stinks to high hell and now you're going to put a bunch of people next to it? A treatment facility? Where they treat the the areas with treated wastewater. The city's already been slapped on the wrist multiple times for fecal matter being in the river, but yet you want to put people down there? All we're doing is enabling. The same thing to happen over and over and over again. At some point, you have to say enough is enough. No more. But when is that enough going to be enough? Does somebody have to die on your front porch? Can't tell you how many overdoses are in a 12th Street camp. Nobody can listen to any of the police scanners because we decided to go encrypted. So we actually don't really know what really goes on. I would like for you all to think very deeply before you accept anything. Or if you've already done it or not, but send it, send their proposal through to the staff or an RFP. Anything like that of. What you truly feel is enough. Because a lot of the organizations. Maybe not you personally, Mike, with community sharing, but the HIV alliances. All those, they're benefiting off their demise. Giving them stuff to do more drugs. Is benefiting. They're getting grants. They're getting government funding. To kill people. Plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Hartwright.
Good evening, council. Patrick Hartwright, Ward 4. I have some issues that kind of reflects back on some of the stuff that I heard today. One of the issues is I did hear on the news that happened today, that the city, that the city did. The city did enter into an agreement. I thought that it was St. Vincent de Paul was just presenting tonight. If something's not clear, we need to clarify this. Let's, let's do it right this time. We have to do something. House Bill 3115, we all know where that lies. I'm in support. Against a lot of other people's opinions, I'm in support of opening the 99 site back up. Going through and having like a citizen review board that will help. Pick people. That has the most, has the most chance of success. To give them a stepping stone, to have them, there's people I know that has jobs. Give those people the opportunity to be in a shelter so they don't have to be around chaos. And then with the wastewater site. I'm for St. Vincent de Paul coming in as long as we can set rules that's enforced. And you know, it's like you guys are getting a lot of heat tonight because of decisions that was made and there was a lot of misleading stuff. Ms. Conley had advised the old city manager. That we didn't have to do anything. In society today, we do have to do something. We're legally bound to do something. But what are we going to do? That's a dilemma. We have to do something. If we do dust to dawn at this point, what's going to happen? We're going to have people roaming. So we have to find some answer somehow. And I think St. Vincent de Paul, I've worked with them in the past on Highway 99 in Eugene when I had businesses there. I had no issues with them. They helped with cleaning and supplying trash cans for us to clean up our field. I really just think that we need to be transparent if the city is going to do any in kind donations. Water, sewer, or anything at these places. I think that we have to put an RFP out to be legal. I'm not certain that's between you guys to do. But I really, I really feel that an RFP should go out. We should have a transparent contract. That everybody can review before any agreements entered into. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Feather Bastard.
Feather Bostad, honorable mayor and council people. There is, there are a couple of issues that are really heated right now in our city and that's the recall, as you know, and then this, this issue with the homeless. So they're very intermingled because as, as we can hear, there's certain themes. People didn't feel like they were. Either they felt they were mis-informed or railroaded into the last, the decisions that were made last time and a couple of years ago. I, of course, was part of, a little bit a part of that. I, I opposed it, but especially after the 99 site was here. I, I wanted success for that. Unfortunately. I wasn't really in favor of carry it. I, I mean, I was not in favor of a city doing what we did. But I wanted that for sure to succeed. I want people to be lifted out, up and out of their situation if they want. So. What we see this time now, well, what happened there in 99, the, to, to get any information out of that was very closed. And it was, it was so much information. It was like kept, we barely even now have some accounting and that's maybe just a few of the hard costs. And not, not very good. I still don't know what all the soft costs have been for these last few years with our. You know, water, all, all the bills that the city has paid, although some just came out. Thank you. Mr. Manager. So I did attend Saturday, a couple of Saturdays ago, the all day and listened to St. Vincent de Paul's. Presentation and I will say it felt much different than Carry It Forward. I felt like there was a resonance. There's different. Very different spirit. There's different history. Those guys have been a real mecca in, in Eugene and Springfield area. Connecting a bunch of different services. They've done a much better job and that, that this very complicated issue. But I, I, one thing that I am encouraged. But I'm, I, one thing that I am encouraging you guys to not do, and I think it's echoed last time, we had that the city, the town hall. That was not a town hall. That was a presentation that did, and many people felt manipulated, and I I did as well. So what I'm encouraging is that this time, we don't make the decision to, okay, it's it's a mess. Let's give it to somebody else. Let's, I I encourage us all to be be more involved. I want transparency. I want to know what the bills are. I want to know how, what the emergency and police calls are. I want to know how many people are dying in the camps. So I'm, I guess I, I'll finish up just by saying thank you for waiting on this decision. Let's get more, as as many people that, obviously, there's a lot of people who are interested in making the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Johanna Z.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. My name is Johanna Z. Thin City Limits, Ward four. So I feel like with this presentation, there's a bit of a disconnect between council and the public, just as we've seen in the past. Something is put on the agenda, but not as an action item, and then right at the end, somebody makes a motion, someone seconds it, and then boom, something happens, and we're just kind of left like we're blindsided. Where did that come from? So I feel like we're not really communicating here with this. So, and that's what happened last time, when all of a sudden it was like, oh, you you did make a decision, and we were just unaware. So as we know, bringing in these types of services will only serve to attract more homeless into the community. All we have to do is look at the police blog to see how many people are picked up with warrants from outside the area, like they're hiding out here. By law, we're not required to set up a shelter. We can regulate time, space, and time, space, and manner with what is objectively reasonable until the Oregon legislature can repeal that House Bill thirty-one fifteen. So it is reasonable to not permit camping in parks with playgrounds or near schools or bike paths, for instance. You know, we as a community can step up and provide real outreach, not the handout, handouts, but help people, helping people has become really difficult as the city has given so much to people. There's just no incentive to do anything different. And again, I had a couple of really good conversations with with people today that I would love to help, but why would they do anything different? So these outside companies who have no investment in this community and has nothing to do with the people who work for Saint Vinnie's, I'm sure they're very compassionate people, so it's not, this isn't personal. So Saint Vinnie's will not be able to manage this population. We're upwards of about a hundred, I think, at this point, that would need to be moved out. The communities like Eugene are actually the worst in the country per capita. We have the highest per capita homeless rate there. So how do we measure the success of their programs? We have to look at the whole community as a whole, and Eugene is a real mess. So it's not how many people are served. We have to stop looking at that because that doesn't really tell us anything. We could say we gave out two thousand meals. But what does that really mean? If you look at, people are in tents everywhere and 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 doing, you know, doing drugs. And I mean, my heart goes out for the neighbor that I spoke to today of the camp and the people in the camp and the challenges that they face, because they definitely had some, you know, mental health challenges and drug issues. So it's difficult to comment on the presentation because we haven't heard it yet. So this setup with talking now at the beginning doesn't really make a lot of sense. It'd be better if we could actually speak after we heard what they said, but we have to wait for the next meeting to comment on that. So something does need to be done. I, you know, this preemptive conditioning, as we heard again, meaning they're basically saying it's a done deal. As Randall had mentioned, he said inferring there's a partnership. That's what I spoke to last time. It makes everybody think, well, this is done, so we're gonna keep going, and I can't read the rest of my handwriting. But we do need to, you know, do something, but again, we have to be clear on what is accurate information out there, and there's a lot of information that's coming out from you guys that's actually not accurate. So I encourage everyone to read the laws themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. These proceedings are being recorded. Did you, oh, Counselor?
Oh, can we respond at this point to some of the comments?
Let's just wait till concerns of council, because we're already pretty far behind.
Well, I just wanted to know, the, there's been several accusations about having a done deal, and as far as I know, none, nothing has been presented to council. We've made no decisions. We were awaiting a presentation was all. So.
Mindy.
Oh, yes.
Joel, can you hear us? Would you like to speak? Mr. Wrighton. Okay. Sorry about that, Joel. All right, we'll move into our public hearing. I will now open the public hearing at seven fifty-seven PM. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of taking comments on a proposal to vacate a public right-of-way. We will now have a staff report by the city planner, Mr. Monken.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The proposed vacation of a twelve-foot wide alley located on the northern boundary of Pierce Avenue was initiated by the abutting property owner, John Sellers, for the purposes of creating a five-lot subdivision and to develop four new single-family dwellings. Staff has researched the history of the alley and determined that in nineteen fourteen, deed language was included in a transaction that reserved a twelve-foot alley running north-south from the north side of Pierce Avenue. Staff has further investigated and determined that there was no evidence that the city ever accepted the alley as a public right-of-way. To clear the deed of the reserved alley is appropriate to utilize the right-of-way vacation process, allowing the alley to be returned to the current owner of the abutting property. The property on either side of the alley is owned by Mr. Sellers. Purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed vacation of the twelve-foot alley. It is now appropriate that the council hold public hearing.
We'll now take public testimony. For all people, all persons wishing to testify, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone that would like to testify on this matter? I see none. Questions from the council? I see none. I'll now close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Resolutions and ordinances. Item A, resolution regarding workers' compensation cover, coverage, staff report by Ms. Mandy Beeler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. O R S six fifty-six oh three one mandates that a public entity formally request workers' compensation coverage in writing. This request is made through a resolution from the governing body declaring the intent to cover volunteer personnel. The resolution, the resolution must include a description of the work performed by each volunteer class or category. After reviewing the current and recently added volunteer classifications, it has been determined that an updated workers' compensation resolution is necessary. This resolution ensures compliance and addresses any changes related to workers' compensation coverage for volunteers. Staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed resolution, expanding the workers' compensation categories covered by the City of Cottage Grove's workers' compensation insurance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Resolution number?
Resolution number two one four eight.
Hail, Sorban.
Okay, move the council adopt resolution two one four eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck? Counselor Drier? Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Solzby?
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, first vote for ordinance vacating a twelve-foot wide alley located on the northern boundary of Pierce Avenue. Staff report by Mr. Monken.
Thank you, Mayor. Council has held a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to vacate a twelve-foot alley on the northern boundary of Pierce Avenue, receiving no comments. It is now appropriate that the council consider the attached draft ordinance for a first vote. It is recommended that after council deliberation, that the council hold the first vote on the attached ordinance. This ordinance was prepared at least one week prior to this meeting, and therefore it could be adopted in one meeting. Staff is recommending adoption.
Counselor Fleck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that Resolution twenty-one forty-nine be adopted. Ordinance, I'm sorry. How about an ordinance number?
Ordinance number will be three one eight six.
Sorry, I move that ordinance three one eight six be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment. So Friday at the agenda session, I had mentioned that I'd looked at a map, and this is actually behind the old Harrison Elementary. There's nowhere this alley would go. I mean, so this, this makes total sense. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I mentioned on Friday morning. Thank you.
Recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Drier?
Aye.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Urban?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Mayor Solzby?
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Item C, ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement to Douglas Fastnet. Staff report by Mr. Monken.
Thank you again, Mayor. The negotiations with Douglas Fastnet have successfully been completed, and the proposed franchise agreement is attached. It is now appropriate for the council to consider the attached agreement for a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise with Douglas Fastnet. It is recommended that after council deliberation, city council hold the first vote on the attached draft ordinance. This ordinance was prepared and has been available for at least one week prior to this meeting, therefore it could be adopted in one meeting. Staff, his staff is recommending adoption.
Counselor Urban?
Thank you, Mary. Move the council adopt ordinance number three one eight seven.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, we just did this with Zipley and had conversations about undergrounding, where there's undergrounding and requiring that they go underground if that ever moved forward, and so I'm just reiterating that this is the same for Douglas Fastnet as well. Correct?
Mayor, Counselor Savage, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Oh, Ms. Counselor Urban?
Yeah, thank you, and apologize for missing the Friday agenda session. We, I was considering some issues that we've run across just with, in my neighborhood. And, you know, for a longest time, there were just telecom lines dangling almost at head level, and it took a lot multiple times to to get anybody to do anything, and all they did is put electrical tape to presumably getting it above the ten-foot mark, but they're all loose strand kind of stuff. So two thoughts. I was looking for some level of maintenance requirement. You know, avoiding a hazard, potential language, and it could have been wrapped up in some of the other, but just maybe thinking about that going forward. And then I was also looking for what's max capacity, what governs max capacity on some of these poles where there's existing infrastructure, and are they, are they driven down? And, you know, people are getting new franchises. How many can we sustain? So those are a couple of thoughts that I was having in going through this, but as far as the resolution amendment support.
Mayor, Counselor Urban, I I'm not familiar with the acronymed agency that does regulate those telecoms and transmission poles, things like that. I do know that there is required separation from power and and the low voltage telecommunications wires. As part of our experience working with Zipley, the other recently approved franchise agreement, I know that Pacific Power has stated, you know, that they've got to go out and inspect several hundred poles before Zipley can start hanging on there. So there will, you know, as we're learning with these new providers coming into town, we're learning some of that information, but it's my understanding that as part of those inspections, it's not just for the quality of the pole, but whether or not they're tall enough to handle that much space, you know, that separation.
If I could follow up, when, I don't know how feasible it would be or how prohibitive, but if we, in the future, could work in something where if there are service disconnects, I understand that the provider wants to keep that line there in case the next one comes in, but to have, to start decoupling the aerial something, you know, if the house no longer needs a landline and nobody's had one, you know, there's, I think, a ton of strands that are just going to nowhere and not being utilized and could be getting us closer to, you know, not having everything aerial.
Anyone else? We have a motion with a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Drier?
Aye.
Counselor Urban?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Mayor Solzby?
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Business from the City Council. Award of Street Improvements Contract Staff Report by Public Works Director, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, Cottage Grove and Crestwell posted an invitation to bid for street improvement projects. I'd let you know that this is the fourth year that the city of Crestwell and Cottage Grove have partnered in this process. The city of Crestwell requested bids for chip and onyx ceiling of North Second Street, Crestwood Drive and Crestwood Drive. The city of Cottage Grove requested bids for scrub, chip, and onyx ceiling on South Gateway Boulevard, North Sixteenth Street, East Whittaker Avenue, Thornton Lane, South River Road, South R Street, and two layers of chip and one layer of onyx seal on the Middlefield Golf Course cart paths. The intent to bid, as I said, was a joint effort and is in an effort to reduce the cost of preparing the bid documents and inefficiencies in bidding. Seal bids were due at three PM on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at the city Cottage Grove's Public Works and Development Department. The intent to bid was published on June seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and one bid was received and opened on June twenty-seventh. And it was from Sierra Santa Fe Corporation. The bid document was reviewed and deemed complete. It approved, if approved, the chip seal projects would be performed starting September ninth, and completion expected the week of September twentieth, weather permitting. I would share at the agenda session, it was brought to my attention about where these costs would come from and possibly not having money available. I would share that the Main Street project was fully funded of our city's portion of the match in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which we just finished. These are proposed projects for the twenty-four, twenty-five. The Budget Committee and Council approved a one-million-dollar loan to do street improvements this year to address some of the more serious street conditions that are arising in the city. So the city of Cottage Grove, or the city council, the recommendation is to move to award the street improvement contract to Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for eight hundred twenty-five thousand three oh seven for the two thousand twenty-four Cottage Grove streets and Middlefield Golf Courts path improvements and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents. The Street Capital Fund will pay for the street costs, and the wastewater reserve will pay for the golf court path, golf course paths, and the bicycle and footpaths will pay for the North Regional Park path. And I'd break that down to the the cart paths are approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, and the remaining will, is for the street works. I would also share that we've contracted with Sierra Santa Fe for three years, three different years, and they've done excellent work. They are very good to work with, and and we we receive nothing but compliments on the way they come into the community, work, and they get their job done.
Counselor Urban?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. We're all excited to to be at the other end of September with with this, and I'll move that the council award the street improvement contract to Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for eight hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred and seven dollars for the twenty-two-four Cottage Grove streets and Middlefield Golf Course cart paths improvements and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, thank you so much for answering my questions. I really appreciate it, and I had written down a couple more questions, which you must have read my mind, because you also answered those, so I really appreciate the So I really appreciate the breakout and the designation between what monies went to which accounts. So thank you for, for doing that. I really appreciate it.
Counselor Merity.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the, the, working with Crestwell to lower our costs and also in explaining the, the processes when we discussed in the ad hoc road committee. You can lose a street slowly or you can preserve it. So these are preserving techniques that will allow us to strengthen our streets to last a lot longer than, and more cost effective than a complete rebuild. So preserving what we've got. Some people may have noticed the very rough section on East Main from the underpass on towards Walmart has been preliminary repairs done in preparation of this work. Is that not true, Director Stewart?
Mayor, Council Merity, that is correct. So we took and filled in the potholes. We contracted, it was a joint effort between a local contractor and our city staff to repair the potholes and get the road ready for the chip sealing. The road rigibility should improve slightly because of the scrub seal and they'd be able to try to fill in some additional voids with this chip seal process. The intent is the remaining roads that I listed to do the same road preparation, repair potholes. And also, if, if needed, just address some of the deterioration. If you've traveled on South Gateway between Main Street and Taylor, you might see closer to Taylor that the city crew went in there and brushed a, a large area section and dug a ditch and installed a French drain because what we're experiencing is water is seeping out of the ground and setting on that section of gateway, which is causing additional deterioration. So we addressed getting the water off and then in the next month and a half, we'll go in and fix the, that deteriorated area before the chip seal. So you're correct, Counselor. We're preparing those for the chip seal.
Any others? Can, we have a comment quickly? Go ahead.
Point of order, this is not public comment period and.
No, I just had a.
No, this is not public comment period.
Okay, okay.
We'll get, we'll get you after, Council. All right. All right, we have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item B, authorization to participate in cooperative purchasing through Sourcewell to purchase an Elgin Regan X Street Sweeper. Staff report by Public Works Director, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Public Works Department budgeted in the current year a, for a new street sweeper to assist in, assist in cleaning the city streets and reducing the amount of foreign matter entering the storm drainage system. Staff over the past few months have demoed three various different street sweepers. One was a manufactured by Swartz and two different Elgin models. The Elgin Regen X performed the best cleaning the city streets and was easier to perform routine maintenance on. And the Elgin Regen X was the most operator friendly of the three demoed sweepers. The proposal from Owens Equipment is to, for a two thousand twenty-two model Elgin Regen X that was used for demonstrations, Owens Equipment is offering the street sweeper for three hundred and thirty-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. The city is a member of the Sourcewell Collaborative and, and is eligible for a six thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty cent discount. A new two thousand and twenty-four Elgin Regen X sweeper is estimated to cost four hundred and fifteen thousand. At the present time, the delivery once ordered would take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months for delivery. The city's current sweeper was purchased in two thousand and fifteen and is nearing the end of its useful life. The city operates the sweeper daily, nine hours a day, and due to its age and amount of use, the sweeper maintenance costs have increased or parts wear out and fail. And we found that they've also been difficult to acquire from Swartz because the parts have to come from across the country. Staff investigated the policies and procedures of the Sourcewell contract and found it to conform with both city and state laws. Staff drafted the current purchase agreement for the purchase. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement for the two thousand and twenty-two Elgin Regen X street sweeper from Owens Equipment for three hundred and thirty-eight thousand ninety, fifty-two dollars and twenty cents through the Coursewell Cooperative, Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Contract Number zero-nine-three-zero-two-one-dash-E-L-G. Cost of the sweeper purchase will be funded by the Storm Drainage Reserve Fund, provided that it was, it was also approved in the adopted budget for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Counselor Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. We certainly appreciate the street sweeper's activities and just not only the storm drain just keeps dust down and everything. So we appreciate that those get run. And with that, I will recommend that the council authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement for the two thousand twenty-two Elgin Regen X street sweeper from Owens Equipment for three hundred and thirty-eight thousand fifty dol, fifty-two dollars and twenty cents through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement Contract Number zero-nine-three-zero-two-one-dash-E-L-G.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. Any discussion? Counselor Fleck.
Yeah, I'd like to mention, I'd asked on Friday about, you know, not having bids for other models and, and how this qualified as a single source. I know that we've done this in the past with like HVAC systems where only one person, you know, provided those, but I guess, I guess I'd love to hear that explanation again tonight.
Yeah, so. Thank you. This is not a sole source. This is Sourcewell that conducts, conducted a cooperative procurement. So instead of sole source, think piggyback. So what that entails is a different company conducted a formal procurement, included the name of Cottage Grove on its procurement. And then anyone who has a contract with Sourcewell, the city of Cottage Grove has the ability to contract with them directly. And we double checked that all the cooperative procurement requirements had been met and no notice needed to be published as a result. So it's a piggyback contract.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item C, Saint Vincent de Paul Presentation. Staff report by city manager, Mr. Sauerlein.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council. This is a follow-up to our May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council work session and our May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. And I'll wait till the PowerPoint's loaded up. Next page. What I'd like to do this evening is three things. First, I want to give you a brief review of our May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council work session and our May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. And then I'll be turning it over to our city attorney to talk a little bit about the recent Supreme Court decision. And then I'll be speaking with Jack Boyce and, and other representative from Saint Vincent de Paul about their business plan for the Highway ninety-nine shelter and the proposed connector shelter. So on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, just give you some brief background. The city council held a six-hour work session where they discussed the history and cost for shelter operations in Cottage Grove, the impact of federal court decisions and state laws on homeless and shelter populations. They also looked at actionable options for the Twelfth Street, Douglas and Highway ninety-nine shelters. Included in those actionable options was relocating the occup, occupants, how can I miss that word? Occupants from the Twelfth Street and Douglas to a new site referred to as the Connector Shelter, which is located between the city's water reclamation facility and the Cottage Grove Connector. And we've all seen this before. This just gives you a, a brief map of the site I'm referring to. On May twenty-eighth, the regular city council meeting, in addition to updating the history and hard costs for shelter operations, the city council accepted the following city staff recommendations. In cooperation with Saint Vincent de Paul, develop a business plan for the proposed Connector Shelter, possibly the Highway ninety-nine Shelter. This business plan would have a very strong emphasis on stable, sustainable and long-term funding. And let me be very clear about this. There is no funding for homelessness in the current city's fiscal year budget. We'd be looking to Saint Vincent de Paul to find a way to fund these projects. We also want to work with our city attorney to make sure that we're following the appropriate procurement process, contracting for a lease or a service contract. There would be a transition of the Twelfth Street and Douglas Street shelters to the Connector Shelter. This include a plan for closing Twelfth Street and closing the Douglas Street shelters. Also pop it, possibly repurposing the Highway ninety-nine shelter, which has been mothballed, and repurposing the Douglas Street Shelter. It's my understanding that that property was originally purchased for low-income house. So we'd be looking at that as an option as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney to talk about the case of City of Grants Pass versus Johnson.
Hey, good evening. So I'm doing just a really quick kind of framing of the issues because since we talked as anticipated, the United States Supreme Court overturned the Grants Pass v. Johnson case. That was based on Martin v. Boise, and we anticipated the Supreme Court was going to act in this way. Unfortunately for you, many of your citizens actually seem to understand that that really didn't change a lot for us here in Oregon. But the reason I'm talking about this is because it's seemingly, the headlines certainly are mischaracterizing the situation. And so what happened on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, just like we thought, US Supreme Court said not cruel and unusual punishment to enforce public property regulations. That's, that's all they said. They did not find that the Grants Pass regulations that were at issue were constitutional. They didn't rule on those at all. There even was discussion, both in the majority and the dissent of there's possibly other challenges that could be brought against the Grants Pass ordinances that were at issue there that prohibited camping. So I just want us all to be really clear that even if we were just looking at the Grants Pass v. Johnson case, it did, you know, this narrow thing, it wiped out Martin v. Boise. But here in Oregon, we have one-nine-five-five-three-oh, and that's the next slide. So we're continue to need to make sure that the regulations on the book, books are reasonable from the perspective of unhoused individual and a court would look at the totality of the circumstances. At the workshop, we discussed a Medford ruling that had said totality of the circumstances in Medford weighed in favor of supporting the local regulations there that protected public space because the, the, the city had taken efforts, made efforts to have shelters available, had rotating times and places that different public places were closed and open. They took public safety into account to close areas for fire and wetland areas, greenway overlays. So there was just a number of factors that the local city council had taken into account when it adopted its, were deemed reasonable regulations at the time. That was a federal court, so arguably they were only applying Martin v. Boise. But they mentioned one-nine-five-five-three-oh. So to me, it's kind of instructive on what might constitute the totality of the circumstances for a city not wanting to run afoul of one, one, one-nine-five-five-three-oh. I think the next slide is really just a reminder of what we've talked about in the past of what is acceptable. And as you can see, the last bullet point there again talks about that city of Medford case that was decided January of this year. So let's move on to the next slide. Interestingly for us, one-nine-five-five-three-oh was drafted to codify Martin v. Boise. The legislature at the time was concerned that Martin v. Boise would be reversed by the Supreme Court. So they wanted to encapsulate that law in statute. Therefore, the Martin v. Boise and Grants Pass kind of continues for us in Oregon because it's part of our legislative history. It's part of the legislative history for that statute. Now, it may be that courts are going to find that the language of the statutes significantly limited given the absence of the federal constitutional decisions. It may be that the legislature is going to reverse, amend, repeal any or all of one-nine-five-five-three-oh. But right now, we're still looking at the law basically as it was before June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. That does not mean that your hands are tied. And I just want to emphasize that there are a lot of policy choices on the table for this council and all the councils in Oregon, just like there have been since Martin v. Boise was decided. And I can help you wrestle with those, but the hard policy choices are obviously yours. Thanks. Were there any questions about anything that either my or I said?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. There, there seems to be, and thank you for being here. There's the do-nothing approach, i.e., I guess, maintain, I have to conceptualize what that actually means, but provide no formal shelter or designated, you know, gated-off situation. And, but have like a park designated to sit, sleep and lie with reasonable accommodations. Do you, I mean, you're connected with a number of other cities. What in your estimation has, has the effect been? Or how many are trying that? What is the efficacy of that been? I don't know if you want bullet point questions or, or wait for each answer.
Well, if it's, I think all you've asked so far is what are other cities doing?
As it, as it relates to the kind of minimal investment, what would be required and least attractive, I guess, to additional persons from outside of, of the city. There was an idea that has gone around of turning over public parks or public spaces in large to private management or nonprofit to effectively, I guess, circumvent the public part of this, where all the requirements lie. Wonder if that has any, if that's been tried. If you are aware of that approach being implemented anywhere and what comes along with that. And are there conversations with BLM and National Forest and county in collaboration? You know, I, I know some of the arguments in the, the start of that case, we're talking about what constitutes community and where a shelter is in proximity to where someone resides. What's reasonable in terms of the expectation for folks to, to travel to those? So I wonder if, if that opens up additional conversation with, with our county and other, you know, jurisdictions that seem to not be under the same restrictions as one-nine-five.
Okay, so what other cities are doing unfortunately always is a calculus. It depends on what is your unhoused population. So what one community can do for their two unhoused members of their city is very different than what somebody, what a city might do for a hundred or over a hundred. And I have seen the gambit of setting aside a parking lot that's available, you know, from seven P M. to seven A M. To what you all attempted to do, which was to try to ensure that there was some public space available and also a service-oriented. shelter location that. Yeah, so. Let's see. Trying to think if there's anything else on that. It, it really is a case by case analysis. Privatizing parks, I don't think is a great idea. At least until we find out what the difference is now under only one nine five five three oh as opposed to the federal constitutional rights and our statutory mandates. And the reason for that is because my best advice would be, well, if you're privatizing your parks, that just intensifies the pressure on your remaining public properties, like your city hall, like your library, your community center, that you probably wouldn't. I can't imagine that you could even privatize those. So you would want to consider that really carefully before you start leasing out public parklands. And then partnering with BLM and county, the, the direction so far has been any kind of partnership that's outside the city boundaries isn't going to count to ensure, you know, to, to ensure that you have public property that's available for sitting, lying, sleeping, keeping warm and dry within your boundaries. But it may be, I, I do think that those kinds of partnerships add to that totality of the circumstances that would be looked at. So if there is a a very good location that is on the boundaries, right over the boundary of the city, and there's space within the city, you could look at the partnership service area to explain to a court why this is reasonable from an unhoused individual's perspective. So I, I wouldn't shy away from that, but I wouldn't put all your eggs in the basket of a county BLM partnership. So was she, was she enough for you?
That was as expected.
Ms. Conley, so as you, I'm sure remember, I was always in favor of doing the minimal that we needed to do as a city, which I've always believed was dust till dawn, seven to seven. And no homesteading. And for all the reasons that I think happened that we've seen over the past two years, we started out with twelve tents in combination between the community center and city hall, and now we're up to. We don't even know an exact number, but it looks like about a hundred and fifty homeless now. And so our population has grown exponentially. And my fear now is I don't think ultimately what happened with the Supreme Court for cities to enforce their ordinances, I think can be good down the road. However, right now I think it's terrible for Oregon because what I can perceive happening is every other state that is in the ninth district now. So we've got California, Washington, Nevada, Arizona. They can all start enforcing their ordinances and Oregon is telling us that we can't. And so I feel like our state has completely abandoned us on this and putting it on our cities to take care of the issue. And towns like Cottage Grove, I feel are too small to handle this. We do, we cannot, I mean, we've seen our population just boom. And it's not been good for our citizens. And coming from all surrounding areas, I feel like this has been a social experiment, much like measure one ten with the drugs, and we've seen the state now reverse direction on that. And so I'm hoping that they will see this and realize what can happen to our state with that. With that being said, what kind of legal legs do we have as cities now? Because what I would like to see cities do is city leadership band together and go to our legislators and say, if the state believes so much that cities should be taking care of this issue, why is it still illegal on state lands? And, you know, because that should hold true. And I even read one place where the county was discouraging cities from renting campgrounds, county campgrounds to put up their homeless. And which, I mean, hey, why, why doesn't the county take a part in this? Why doesn't the state take a part in this? It seems completely unacceptable to lay this at the feet of municipalities. And so that's, I would like your input on that.
Just the only clarification is that one nine five five three oh applies to city laws and county laws. So counties too are subject to the same restrictions. That doesn't mean that the county needs to say in my county campground, we're going to use it for this exclusive purpose. So I, so I'm not necessarily speaking to your example. I, I think that if you want to see changes to one nine five five three oh, I think the only option is to go to the legislature. So I would exercise that right and avenue as much as this body wants to and as much as you want to individually.
I feel like right now we are at the same crossroads that we were at when we grew our population and put in camps. And I fear if we put in a bigger camp, it's, it's still not going to be enough. I mean, if we have a mass migration into Oregon, we are still going to be in the same situation where we will have to open our parks. And so I feel like personally, right now, we should look at doing the least that we can and prepare for a mass migration and not make it, I know this sounds harsh, but too comfortable in our city. And that's, that's my take on that.
So the, the aspect of that, which is valid, valid from a legal perspective, I think engaging staff on what is practical is, is the critical component. Because what I recall hearing all along was we don't have the resources to do dusk to dawn. And maybe they're there, maybe they're not, but I, I just want to say that it was never a legal consideration, except for trying to create a better totality of the circumstances. But it wasn't, it wasn't that you were legally prohibited from having a twelve-hour limit, a twenty-four-hour limit, a forty-eight-hour limit, a seventy-two-hour limit. It's enforcing that and recognizing that if you move people from one location, that you're moving them to somewhere else, wherever that might be. And, and so again, that's all, that is a practical concern. I recognize that is your province, not my province, but I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost.
Counselor Black?
Yeah, so I remember asking about, at our last league conference, they talked about Duncan versus Portland, which was basically Oregon Law Group, I think it was filed, sued against Portland that their dusk to dawn wasn't reasonably objective. And so one thing I think the legislature is going to have to determine and tell us what is reasonably objective, because right now we're all shooting in the dark. But I guess I'm wondering in the Medford case, do they have, I think I heard you say that there are different sites available at different times so that they're still reasonably objective, or is that part of that totality of, of what they're offering that allows them to not fall under the same standard as the Duncan case?
Yeah, well, so first of all, Duncan, remember Portland changed their law, so it was moot. It, it was never decided. So we didn't get a court ruling on whether or not what Portland initially was trying to enforce was reasonable. And what the court said in this City of Medford case was where a city has participated in making multiple shelters available, it reflects a commitment to assisting their unhoused neighbors. It lends itself to the reasonability of whatever restrictions are in place. So say you wanted to close all parks at night or the majority of parks at night, having shelters available supports that totality of the circumstances from this court.
Counselor?
Do you know if in that case they were looking at the available bed count as part of that analysis or just the fact that shelters were made, that were erected?
I think that there was a, so this is distant memory, May, May was a long time ago. Sorry, I didn't look at it tonight. But there was a system that had been developed so that officers out on the streets had a, either approximate or accurate count of the bed count. And that was part of what had been instituted by that community.
Counselor Savage? Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think that we're actually more aligned than different. We're just seeing things differently. I too share that concern. I feel like House Bill thirty-one fifteen has put us in quite a predicament. And I would suspect that they're going to be revisiting that. And I'm glad that they will be, you know, this has been a really tough place and we can't afford it. And that's why there's the unmanaged sites, because we can't afford it. It's a really tough situation. I think we're going to need all hands on deck with lots of ideas. It's going to take a little of this and a little of that. I think that's probably why Medford got away with not being sued, because they had a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And there were some dust till dawn sites, there's some managed sites, there's camping site. You know, there's, there's different options that somebody will fit somewhere. We're not Medford, we're not as big as Medford, we're smaller than Medford. I think this is exactly the conversation that we should be taking to the state level and having conversations with our representatives and our senators and banding together and working with the League of Oregon Cities priorities and saying, this is our list of priorities. This is how we want it to be seen. I think, I think we are stronger together and we should use all of this together and make those choices and move forward into something that's workable, because it's super frustrating. I do feel like my hands are tied, and so I do want to know more options. But I think it's going to take more than just a couple of options. I think we need lots of options, but I also have a hard time seeing where, how, how is that even going to work? We're tiny, you know, we're just over ten thousand people. We're not Medford sixty, eighty thousand. We don't, not Eugene. We don't want folks sleeping in their cars in parking lots. It's not ideal. That's, I mean, I, I agree, it's super frustrating. So what's the solution? What do we do? And that's the tough part, you know, that what is the solution?
Counselor?
Well, one of the items in talking about this that was always used against the dust to dawn is, well, then you'll have people in the parks during the day. And I don't know when that was ever an issue. That's what parks are for, it's for people to be in. Doesn't matter if they're housed or unhoused. What we have here, the rest, citizens are upset about is behaviors that are antisocial, that are anti-community, that are dangerous and destructive and unsafe for kids. So, you know, those, that's why I want to explore these ideas and then go to the criticisms of why we can't and explore those and really see why not. You know, why not enforce it? And then what would that take from a public safety standpoint, staff and level to, to do an effective measure of enforcement? Cities' hands are tied for things, but it's the people that are responsible for setting culture and what's acceptable in a town on, on the, on the ground. And so I think we need better education as to what the right of each citizen is and, you know, what their supports are in a city that gets behind what they are looking for and says, here's how, here's what you can do, you know, here's what's outside of our hands. I don't think we have a money issue. I think we have a coordinated effort and cooperation issue. And we can do, we can, one of my goals is, you know, we, how do we stem the flood influx? And while, common theme through, through this whole time, we do want to help people who are ready for help. And so we have to be able to sort through that. I, I just think that this is not, you know, we have, we have a lot of history in, in this town about what it took to get and build and the families that have grown, raised up here and have stayed. And there's an ethic behind that that I think we need to tap into and make that known that that's who Cottage Grove is. We're not going to tolerate just destructive behavior. We're just not going to have it. We want to live here. And so that's what we need help crafting.
So one, something between what is happened and, and, and dusk to dawn, just to toss other options on the table, your management plan, your, your ordinances, your resolution and the management plan that was adopted gives great authority for opening and closing different locations. There was, at, at least from my perspective, there was never any intent that any one place was going to become a year-long residence or even a month's long residence. And, and that's somewhere where there could be changes within your current code and resolution and plan structure. So, but I, I do know that this was all an introduction to having Saint Vincent de Paul present. And so I, I don't want to, you know, steal that thunder or walk into that area. I just wanted to set the framework so that nobody is of the opinion of, we literally don't have to do anything.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Meriday?
So I just want to remind about the webinar tomorrow. It's nine, nine AM.
Well, good evening again, Your Honor, Members of the Council. As Councilmember Meriday indicated, our friends at the League of Oregon Cities and our insurance carrier are putting on a webinar tomorrow where they're addressing all of these issues involving the Supreme Court decision. And that's at nine AM tomorrow, and I'm inviting all council members to, we'll, we'll put it in this room. I'm having it up on the screen, so all of you can kind of hear the same message, the same time, the same way from the experts again at League of Oregon Cities and, and our, our insurance carriers. So, and if you are going to attend that, I would ask that you talk to the city recorder. Make sure she can get an accurate head count.
Thank you. All right. Welcome.
Hello, can everyone hear me okay?
And with that, I just would introduce Jack Boyson from Saint Vincent de Paul.
Thank you, Mike. Hello, Your Honor, and members of the city council. Good to see you all again. If it's all right, please skip maybe five slides. Well, welcome back to these. Yep. And if you go to our program, I promise we'll come back to all of these. All right, perfect. Hello, my name is Jack Boyson. I'm the Director of Operations at Saint Vincent de Paul. I'm also in charge of our Homeless and Shelter Services Department. As Mike said, we did a, well, as was mentioned, we did a workshop a couple of months ago. I, I want to make it clear, there's been no agreement. We, we knew about the workshop and then we were told to pitch program proposals today. So here I am. I wanted to skip ahead real quick just to give everyone here that wasn't at the workshop a, a quick run through of our programs and how we at Saint Vincent de Paul operate our programs. We operate them uniquely compared to other nonprofit providers in the area, so to all that we know in the United States. Here's what we focus on. We focus on stability. We focus moving stability into employment. And we focus moving employment into housing. Our programs are unique, like I said, transparency, monthly with the county, both everyone that has entered our programs, everything that has gone on in our programs and everyone that's been housed in our programs. I, I just have a few examples that I just put together the other day of numbers that we track. We are the number one user of HMIS. We are, one hundred percent of our clients that we work with operate through HMIS, which is the county tracking system for not only who is homeless, but the success rates. We are graded by the county specifically on success rates, which is exits into housing. Our team is incredibly trained. We have experience across the board, all the way from individuals with a therapy and a teaching background, all the way to individuals who just a few years ago successfully made the transition from the Washington-Jefferson Bridge area, which was an incredibly, said to be incredibly difficult, and we, we did it incredibly well into now what's our most successful program. I also wanted to say before I go in, I appreciate everyone here so much. I grew up in a small town in Southern Oregon, Rogue River. My dad's a pastor there. I went to school in University of Oregon and I've forgotten. I went to school in University of Oregon and I've forgotten just how important and vital it is for the care of the community in small towns. I, I understand this is an incredibly difficult topic. Thank you for everyone who's spoken. And I just wanna say that what I can present here is, is a solution that does work. It's a solution that we have grown quite a reputation for having work. To put what we do simply is we help people. It's, it's like I said, a very difficult topic, but we found ways to run programs that help with focus on impact. We are a shelter group. We focus on outcomes. We are not an activist group. I feel that that's an important distinction. So just to go over, here's the main number we look at. We look at that total at the bottom left of sixty-six. In twenty twenty-four so far, we have broken down exactly what people have exited our programs into, you know, situations, whether it's temporary, institutional or permanent housing. That's the number we look at every single month. We do have, it was mentioned before, the meal served, average occupancy per night, shelter nights provided. And I understand that the impact can be, can be quite negative of unmanaged shelters, but we run safe, we run organized, we run shelters that are in, in line and work daily, hourly with our local law enforcement. And each of those numbers is a story. Each of those shelter nights provided is someone who wasn't in the cold. Each of those meals provided, served is someone who wasn't hungry that night. We're all human beings and life can be incredibly difficult and, and those are important to, to look at. All right, next slide. So this will just be an introduction briefly into each of our, some of our important programs. I'll run through this pretty quickly. Our first safe sleep site, four-ten Garfield. Four-ten Garfield is where we moved individuals after the Washington Jefferson Bridge shut down. It consists of eighty-six camp spaces set up inside a hangar. You can see pictures. Now, those pictures are actually during operating hours. It may look rather clear, but it's just because we keep our sites very clean. We also have additional eight pet units outside. The hangar's cooling fans and it's heated. Also onsite is clean water restrooms, garbage services, shower trailers, indoor gathering area provides comfortable seating TV. You understand. Each camp space, you can see it, it's in the middle top picture. That's the inside of it. It's eight by eight canopy tent. People customize it to themselves. They set up shelves and we do daily tent checks just to make sure that there's no fire hazards or hazards. There's nothing illegal. There's no drugs inside. It's what I consider a higher barrier than Dust of Dawn, although it does satisfy the low barrier requirement for the state. It has a high rate of success. Employment exits to housing. Something that we like to talk about is there've only been two instances, two week-long instances of the employment rate at that site dropping below forty-eight percent. And those are because we housed about a dozen people twice and most of them weren't employed. So that, that employment rate quickly rose up. We work with the county on a textile work program. We work with many other local businesses and everyone has had a very good experience working with us. Next slide. All right, the service station. Service station is considered the cornerstone of homeless services in Eugene. It's where many service providers meet with individuals, whether it's veteran services, senior disabled services, various other groups. We offer a mail location. Something that isn't talked about often is how hard it is for people to get employed if you don't have an address next to impossible. And so we give people an address through our Eugene service station location. Many people are getting employed every single week from that site. Over ninety-five percent of unhoused individuals in Eugene stop by the Eugene service station at least once. Yeah, it's, it's an incredible place. You can see, we keep it clean. We keep it tidy. We have an excellent staff. We partner with the police every other month to provide meals there, although we provide meals, meals there ourselves every day. Yes, next slide. Dust to Dawn. So Dust to Dawn, I, I think we have maybe a different definition to what Dust to Dawn has been talked about here. That's not to say one is right or one is wrong, just differences. So something that, one of the rules we run programs by is that we have a twenty-four hour plan for every single individual coming into our program. It, it was mentioned before that maybe there's not as much of a concern for homeless individuals being in parks. We, we don't feel that way. And so something that we pay attention to is, do we have a twenty-four hour plan for individuals? Or are we going to weigh down the, the city around us for our sites if, if we don't have that twenty-four hour plan? So for example, if we're providing shelter for people for twelve hours, let's say a hundred people, the other twelve hours, suddenly those hundred people are in that area and not going anywhere. So with this situation, Dust to Dawn, we have people go from Dust to Dawn to our Eugene service station every single day. So during the morning, during the day hours, they're at the service station. During the night hours, they're at Dust to Dawn. These are communal shelters. If anyone's seen MASH, they're the same tents, FEMA-style tents, eight individuals per tent. Before COVID, we had two hundred and fifty people there every night. Currently, we have a hundred and twenty-five. Yeah, yeah, this is a, it's an important program. It's the lowest barrier homeless shelter in the state and on the West Coast. We work, we have designated sites for police drop-offs, cahoots drop-offs and emergency services drop-offs. And we work with them again every single day. This is considered by the city of Eugene, the most important site that they work with and we, we feel the same way. This is individuals that have recently become housed, unhoused. This is often the first step, the first site. And our goal is always to get someone into housing within forty-eight hours if they're newly unhoused. We have a success a lot of the time. All right. All right, if we can go back to the beginning of the presentation, sorry to jump around. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so now on to Cottage Grove. We are extremely excited to present this plan and also to present the progress that we've made on this plan so far in preparation for today. These programs, to make it clear, are for homeless individuals in Cottage Grove. In, in fact, what we anticipate is for many individuals, because we will not be running any specialized programs here in Cottage Grove, we will actually be able to connect them directly with either our sites or partner sites in Eugene. Any type of specialization, by that I mean veterans, individuals with families, youths, anyone fleeing domestic violence. We have connections throughout this, the, the city of Eugene and we anticipate with this, this is, these programs will be for individuals, homeless individuals in Cottage Grove. And we anticipate actually moving people to Eugene if needed due to special circumstances. Being, we've set up an increased focus on outreach staff, primarily case managers. The goal for that is to not only entering a new city and connecting with a new, new population of unhoused individuals, but also to make sure that everyone is getting front door assessed. A lot of, we've, we've seen a lot of unhoused individuals not actually be put on the official processes. They are required by the state and we, we do that with every single client we work with, like who's being front door assessed, which means that we, we do a read on what needs individuals have. How vulnerable are they? Are they in a medical crisis? Are they, you know, things like that in order to hopefully get people into housing quicker and give them the support that they need or connect them with another group to do that better. Our plan has been to, to propose to operate out of two sites, Highway ninety-nine and the connector site. The plan is to transition people out of Douglas and Twelve Street sites and close those two camps as soon as possible. I mentioned the unmanaged camps. We, we operate, I, I, it was mentioned before that we're looked at as harsh by some. The reason for that is because we operate with rules. We operate with accountability. We recognize that, you know, there's a spectrum of unhoused individual, homeless individuals. But the reality is, is that our goal is to get people housed and our goal is to work ourselves out of a job. We, we all are, I, I work with ex-professors and ex-therapists every single day and we all could be making more money elsewhere. And so our goal is to get people housed as quickly as possible.
Jack, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
We have, we're at the nine o'clock hour. Do we have a consensus that we can continue? Okay.
Sorry, I'll, I'll speed up. Sorry.
No, you're good.
To skip ahead, funding's been, oh, so here's the, the great news. With our work, with our reputation and with our, our pitching to the county and to the state, funding has been fully acquired for the Highway ninety-nine site. That includes staff, that includes operations, includes everything you would need. We are, this is, running this site will not cost you all money. I, when, it sounds like money is no longer much of an issue, but I know when we, we had talked previously, money was the main concern. We will come with funding. That's, that's what we do. One more thing, two sites are needed, at least for us to be the ones operating them and to use this funding. We will be hearing about the funding for the connector site on July fourteenth, so that's coming up pretty quick. The reason why we need two sites, we need a backup site. We also need two, two areas to cycle staff and cover in case of an emergency. Like I said, we never will burn the city and we'd never plan to burn the city if our one site goes down. That's why we, we operate out of two sites. We have an amazing team. Preparation, I was talking about the three phases and then I promise I'm wrapping up. Phase one is the outreach and intake. That will be connecting with the, the existing unhoused individuals, seeing who has been front door assessed, seeing who is close to housing, seeing who is ready. We've talked a lot about people that are wanting to take those next steps and aren't wanting to be homeless. That's when we are going to designate that and help those individuals. Front door assessments, initial case management, lots of initial ground to cover. Phase two will be set out, sort out the roles of each shelter. The reality is, is that we come in with a plan. People are people. Plans, plans change and adapt. Finish initial housing wave, move into the long-term shelter system. Long-term, I'm meaning up to a year. And the goal is to then help individuals who maybe aren't immediately ready for housing and to get them stability, employment, and then on to into housing. And then phase three is continuing that. Next slide, please. Highway ninety-nine. We have successfully acquired funding to set up and run the Highway ninety-nine site program. The site facilities are good. The plan is to be fully, fully operational by September, if you all accept. We go over the site plan. Essentially, it's gonna be a twenty-four seven self-contained shelter. Like I said, we always have that twenty-four hour plan. We are already funded for a full staff presence. Food funds are already acquired for one meal daily for full shelter. Rules will be similar to our four-ten Garfield site, including quiet hours, cleanliness, limited items per person, respectful onsite behavior, unit checks. One other thing to add, whenever we run a shelter, we don't have any individual set up their own shelter onsite. We provide the shelter itself. It just helps control mess. It helps control garbage. It helps control, gives, gives us something that we can make sure is fire compliant and safe. Next. Connector site. This is the one we've been working on diligently. We've been applying for funding streams. We'll be hearing back from the main potential funding stream July fourteenth. This will be our, our service station hub for operations. The site will be our lowest barrier, same-day admitted shelter. Since this will begin after the ninety-nine site has been running, if all goes according to, to our plan, we will be transitioning twelfth and Douglas sites remaining residents to this location. So the Highway ninety-nine site, when, if we, we begin that, will be that initial wave of housing individuals. Then we will set up the connector site where we can help individ, basically intake individuals, get them accustomed to our rules, get them accustomed to how we run our shelter and then start moving people into that, that more housing focus one while we start, of course. Twenty-four seven fenced in for safety, security cameras at both sites, single entrance on both ends of site, which can be accessed by code or buzzer, run by staff, area for emergency service drop-offs, RVs, individuals and individuals with pets all will be included in this site. We will work diligently with the police and emergency services. Next slide, please. Here's just a, a quick draft layout. The green rectangles will be the RVs, the, and, and obviously this is not to scale. And I apologize for my Photoshop skills, but the, the dotted lines will be the, the gates. There'll be a secured controlled gate. The yellow squares will be for emergency service drop-offs. The blues will be single individuals. The barn will be this, this large building for the service station that will look incredibly clean and it will hide the, you know, the, the shelter going on behind it. Storage, we have a community room. Both, all the buildings here are going to be AC and heated. The community room could be where case managers meet with individuals. In the barn, we will have eight offices already set up. Good to go for outside providers to come and help individuals. Then a shower trailer and then the pink ones are for pets. Next slide, please. Here's the barn. That's what I've been, that's what we've been calling it internally. I make sure we'll have a nicer name later. The community room. And then at the bottom there, in the bottom middle, those are what the huts will look like. They're ADA compliant. Those aren't the exact ones, but we don't have a picture of those yet. They'll look similar to that. Additionally, a path of flower boxes will go through the middle. It has lights and then there'll be picnic tables. Yeah, yeah. There'll be multiple code-secure HIPAA compliant offices on one side of the barn for service providers and our staff as well as case managers. And on the other side will be indoor rest space for the clients. Yeah, next slide, but I think that's it. Oh, final note. So all of this is the good news. The, the one piece that makes it difficult is we secured funding, which means that we need to, we will need this to happen quicker, sooner rather than later, if you, if we are the, the ones that Cottage Grove is wanting to partner with. We come with funding, we come with staff, we come basically ready to handle all of it. We, the reality is, is that part of why we're able to secure the funding and part of the reason why we have the reputation we have is because we operate with transparency, but we also operate with clarity with the county and with our funding stream. And so we've, we've been, there's been commitment to fund these sites through us. This is not something that can be paused for six months. Just, just to be direct, this is something that we'll, we'll need to know by mid-August if we're the ones that are, are partnering with you all. We would love to. It's, it's clear how much care the city has for its residents. It's clear. All the work that you all have put in, all the work and money to, to the unhoused individuals in your community. We wanna come in, we wanna take that financial burden off of you. We wanna take that staff burden. We have a, a system that works. That said, there is, there is a timeline on this and, and to, to appropriately use those funds, we would need to be in operation by late August. And we would, otherwise we would need to return that money so it can be used for good elsewhere. Thank you all.
Counselor Flack.
Is, is this all-in funding? Is that what we're looking?
It is not. No, no, it's the CHBG funds from the state of Oregon.
Okay, so that's interesting. So CSBG, so you're jumping in with the federal fiscal year starting October one. Is that how that's gonna work?
Actually, we received, because the county feels that this is important, we received the funds retroactively through July, but there, but then we clarified with them that they have the understanding that we may not be able to start until beginning of September.
Okay, cuz I know we were lobbying the governor pretty hard. The original all-in funding did not support existing shelters. And of course, because we had jumped in and done it, there wasn't funding. I know there was some monies coming. We were like number three, you know, on the list of the county as far as supporting shelter. Could that also be funding that will be down the road or?
Yeah, yep, yes.
When I guess the only other piece I would add is that our agency certainly would love to partner and we have HTBA program, which is a HUD program to get folks that are unhoused or at imminent risk into housing. So, and case managed as well. So I would love to, if we go down this road, of course, partner with you guys.
Thank you. Counselor Irvin.
Thank you and thanks for being back.
Yeah.
Trying to condense down what I'm hearing is the, the primary concerns and then offer to you of how you address those in your model. One of them being the concern of, we're in Oregon, we're surrounded by Ninth Circuit Court states, an influx. You're talking about a vetting process, Cottage Grove. Not sure what that means, you know, nine-seven-four-two-four or, or something else. And what do you do with the turnaways? Do you have turnaways? And then addressing the impact on the surrounding community. We had WE fair, rightfully very concerned about that, that infrastructure over there and, and everything that goes along with that. So if you could address those two, and I think in the previous conversation, there was discussion of even having the possibility to where there's compensation back to the city for the use of space. Because after all, we're stewards of land, you know, financial and, and human assets of that the city has at its disposal for its purposes. So I'd love to, to understand, so if we're talking about two sites, you know, how can the city be compensated back for the use of that, that land, if that's part of that? So those are the, the three.
Yeah, if it's all right, I'll work backwards. I'm not in any way trying to make light of, of that. I think you all have done an amazing job helping people and, but we're a nonprofit. We, we, we don't know much about compensating the city of Cottage Grove. What we can do is get funding to, to take this burden off the city. And so I, I know that doesn't answer your question, but I, I also, that's just not something that we're able to do as a nonprofit organization. We can advise, we can help if we're operating in your city. We can advocate that there is cooperation. We can advocate that there, we're all working together and we can definitely help each other with advocacy for, you know, funds coming in. definitely help each other with advocacy for, you know, funds coming in from the state, things like that. But that's, that's the most I can answer that, that piece. For the surrounding community, we work incredibly hard. We, we service the most amount of people in Eugene. And we work incredibly hard to have to mitigate the impact on the surrounding community. Someone spoke earlier on the highway ninety-nine site. That's where we have the lowest barrier. In a colloquial term, the roughest sites in all of Oregon, we run those. And as you heard from surrounding business partners, they aren't negatively impacted. For the turnaways. That's part of why we are needing two sites. Operating the, what I was referring to in terms of bedding was for that first initial, the highway ninety-nine site. Setting up the highway ninety-nine site as a program directly, basically being a stepping stone for individuals, ready, willing, wanting to get into housing. Going to that site, getting off the street, getting settled, maybe getting employment if needed, say, or just time to save up money, which we find all the time. And then entering housing, that's going to be the goal of that site. For the turnaways, that's where we would need the connector site. And that's where we would set up a secure, safe, low-barrier shelter, same with same-day access for individuals that are homeless. So the answer is that's why we need the two sites. One is for the initial turnaways and we found the individuals with time, with connection to medical groups, with connection to health, with connection to stability and with connection to employment, that very few people are unable to eventually reach housing. For context, like I said, we operate with thousands of unique individuals every year. Our programs work and that mass amount of people being right next to businesses, we work really hard to make that as safe as possible. And I think we do a really good job and businesses will vouch for us. And of that mass amount of people that we interact with every year at our service station, we only have four lifetime bans. And we typically don't ban individuals that aren't in direct violation of, to a point where we need to call the police and we are very happy. We work the police every single day. I hope that answered them as best as possible.
Jack, so you're talking about low barrier. But it was my understanding and when I'm listening to your presentation and you do tent checks and you're checking for drugs and it was my understanding that in low barrier, that while they can't do drugs visibly, but that you can't search and you can't check their tents. So that's, that's, I'm hearing something completely different from what we were told with carry it forward.
Totally understand. Here's a trick we found. Maybe I shouldn't just call it a trick. Here's what we found works. If it can be our property, we can search it. That's part of why we don't have individuals come in and bring their own tents or their own structures in at our sites. So if we run and operate a pallet shelter, for example, we have the right as an owner of that property or even a leasur of that property, if the city owns it, to check that. So while we don't do individual bag checks unless we have reason for suspicion or danger, we are able to check the units themselves.
Because yeah, we were told that in low barrier period, you could not, because we own the pallet shelters that they used. And so that was not the truth.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, also, another concern is from what I understand is anytime you bring in these services and then it does become more attractive and it's just kind of a fact that you become more attractive to people coming to your area. And so of course, that is a definite concern of a lot of people in this community. And I would want some assurance that if Saint Vincent de Paul were to shut down their facilities, that they would rehome the people and would that be a possibility in your contract?
It I'll expand on this after. It sadly won't. I'll expand. That makes total sense as a concern. We found statistically, they did a survey two years ago of Eugene and eighty-six percent of people that were homeless had been in Eugene, I believe it was at least five years or were became adults in Eugene. So for example, children younger than become homeless when they turn eighteen. The reality is, is that when, when we've been working with organizations in smaller towns, especially surrounding Portland and especially surrounding Eugene, any increased traffic goes to Eugene or Portland. If we're running these two sites and we have our rules and we have our expectations and we have our regulations and in cooperation with the city, the reality is, is the same percentage of individuals that don't want to come to our sites in Eugene because of those very same things, go to the, go to other nonprofit groups or other shelters. And with Eugene being so, having so many resources available, while not denying that it will never happen, it just is not as attractive for especially transient unhoused individuals. Especially with us operating what some consider more of a strict shelter.
So I, I, so the answer is no.
For, and the question was if we close down, that we rehouse every individual?
That is currently at your location.
Yeah, that if we would have, we could have already, if we could have, we would have already. We can get people housed, we can decrease the amount of homeless population existing in the area. But we, we wouldn't be able to agree to immediately housing every individual at our programs whenever we would shut down.
And you'll have to forgive me. I'm a bit jaded on this whole situation because also like what you're referring to, the surveys, and I don't trust those either because, you know, it all just depends, you know, we've heard that, you know, these people are from Cottage Grove, but you know, they had a cousin that lived here and they came here and by that, in that case, you know, all of our relatives in North Carolina, if one of them came here, they'd be from Cottage Grove. And I don't, I don't count that when they've lived in North Carolina their entire life. So, you know, I just yeah. Anyone else?
Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I've got kind of a laundry list of questions, some of which you've already answered. You said that if you provide the shelter, then you can search the space. We have the pallet shelters and you said you could potentially be leasing the space, but you also said you're not actually exchanging dollars for leasing the space. So is that just a contractual lease? With language? So that would still be the same thing. You would still be able to go in and?
Yes. Oh, I see your question. Yes, yes. Yeah. So for example, with the city of Eugene, one of our sites, we don't own the structures. And so they have that we are functional owners of them until we no longer servicing at that site. And so then it just, we don't, you know, no money is exchanged between us, but we operate and operate the shelter as if it is ours. And then that gets us legal right to search those units.
Okay. I hear very loud and clear that folks would like the unmanaged sites moved and I'm in favor of learning more and supporting you guys for that reason, so that these folks can get better care for them, unhoused can have better care for themselves and so the neighborhoods can get back to being their neighborhoods. Are you prepared to take on all the unhoused, known and unknown? Do you have enough space for that in these two locations?
Yeah, that's what we've been budgeting for and planning for. The plan, like I put in there is to close those unmanaged sites as quickly as possible. We can send outreach workers into those sites to kind of do a preliminary as we're setting up the site. That first site of thirty-three will fill up quickly and we expect to house individuals out of there quickly. And so yes, yeah, our, we will not be operating the unmanaged shelters, but we will be when the time comes, ready to have individuals move into the connector site from those unmanaged shelters. Everyone that we hadn't already worked with and housed through the highway ninety-nine site.
And if agreed upon ninety-nine could open in September?
Yes.
When would the connector open? Same timeframe or is that a different timeframe?
Similar. We don't know exactly.
Because you don't have your funding.
We don't have the funding specifics yet and we want to be respond. I mean, I, the, what I said at the workshop was if Saint Vincent de Paul was to run, the first thing we pay attention to is the money. And then we, we come equipped with that for you all and for the city. And so, yeah, so we don't know exact timeframe of the connector site, but the highway ninety-nine site, September.
Okay. One of the things that was asked for in the previous contract was stats, data reports. And when you joined us at the Saturday meeting, you said, hey, we're already doing these for other folks. We're happy to share. So I'd like to reiterate that.
Yes.
Data drives a lot and that would be appreciated and being super transparent.
Fantastic.
If another nonprofit were to come into town and has a new shiny ball and says, hey, we want to help and we want to do this. Is there anything in in your written contract that would make it? So another group couldn't come in, you know, we want all hands on deck. So if somebody else is like, hey, we want to help?
We fully agree. There, we've never operated with any type of exclusivity contract on the houses and the housing or homeless. Yeah, we would, the the more different types of support and the more just support for individuals, that's what we want. So yes, no, no exclusivity.
Okay. And if they were a higher barrier with more restrictions, that would actually work because you guys would be managing the lower barrier. Okay, thank you for that clarity.
That's a lot of what it is in Eugene. While we communicate clearly our expectations and that's why we're looked at as strict, we actually functionally are the lowest barrier shelters in Eugene. So we managed to, I believe we managed to balance both really well. And so we work really well with higher barrier shelters daily. We're helping them out.
Okay. In the photoshopped.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So the, the black and white checkers on either end are fencing. So are folks free to come and go? How are, how is, how is that managed?
Yes, good. Great question. So at all of our sites, because we use HMIS, we, every single person has a name and has a HMIS number. We don't refer to them the number, of course, but for sharing purposes, we use numbers due to confidentiality. But we don't let anyone onto our site who is not a client of ours or an employee of Saint Vincent de Paul or agreed upon a community partner, for example, senior disabled services. And those are all arranged beforehand and we have approved codes for individual to our gates, but every site we run is a closed shelter. That's something that's really important to us for security and for safety.
Susan living in tenth floor wants to go get a hamburger down the street. Is that okay for them to leave and wander and what if Susan doesn't come back? Then you're like without a person?
So that's where rules come in. So at our sites, we have, if someone is absent from the property for more than a whole day, we basically mark it and then if it goes longer, then we, they eventually lose their, their shelter space. We keep their items in storage for a certain amount of time and then after that we dispose of it through the police.
Sorry for the laundry list. You're doing great. Thank you. So somebody moves in and they've got stuff and things. Where do they put their stuff and things? I see that you have small boxes, but where do the other stuff and things that come with them? Where do they go?
Well, excellent question. It depends the program. We don't allow for a certain amount. We don't allow for more than trash, a big trash can full. We have a surplus of large trash cans and we give people a key. And so on the map, you'll see there's a storage facility kind of behind the barn. We have those lined up and we have them numbered per location. We give them their own personal lock. In connection with the fire department, we have quite a bit of locks that they provide us every month. And people use that lock, keep that key and mark their own bin in association with the numbered shelter that they're in. And then anything more than that, we ask them to dispose or they're not able to receive shelter with us.
And if they're not able to receive shelter with you, where did they go?
That is up to them. As was touched on, due to the laws around shelter, if we have a space available for them, and then I think, I don't remember the specifications, but there's a certain amount required by Lane County for people to have as storage. We meet that requirement. We don't go far over that requirement. And so that means that they've denied access to a reasonable shelter. The thing is, is as harsh as that sounds, we find that most people, this is at Dust to Dawn in Eugene. Most people accommodate. I think in my time there, so I've been intensively working there for the last eight months. And, and then less intensively working there for longer. I've heard of two individuals received cert, one service who didn't receive service and one of those two individuals ended up leaving Eugene. And the other individual ended up coming back, I believe it was three weeks later because they were tired of sitting on the street.
One last question. Let's say we did agree to this as a city and we're like, welcome, come on in. And you guys set up tents at the connector site and it clearly isn't working. What then? Are we able to have conversations about another location? I mean, clearly you're needing two sites, so there has to be two sites, but is there flexibility in those two sites? If, if this didn't work the way that you're saying it does, can we move it somewhere else?
Yes. Yes, you know, we work incredibly closely with the cities that we operate in, with the county. Conversations are happening weekly. I think that that would only be a negative thing if anyone was caught by surprise in the situation that you described. We definitely would be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I think if that were the choice, it wouldn't be a surprise, but.
Yeah. So all I have to say is we, we recognize that no perfect program has been created and we're always looking for feedback. We're always looking for advice. We're always looking for connection with the areas and individuals we're working with to improve our shelters and that may include moving. Neither of the contracts that we have ready for funding specified the site as the designator for that money to be implemented in Cottage Grove.
One last question. Thanks, guys. I'm sorry. One last question. I realize that you don't pay rent on space and land, but would you guys pay utilities? Is that part of your contract or?
Yes.
Okay, so you would pay for garbage and water and?
Yes, yeah, that's designated in our contracts and we have that all ready to go with the highway ninety-nine and we have that asked for in the one that we'll be hearing.
One more question. Now are we done? Is there an end date? Like say, okay, yes, are we tied in for ten years, six years, two years, no end date? Come back, have conversation, like is there a date?
That's up to you all. That's up to the contract and whatever we agreement we all may come to. You know, we definitely have our own rules just for responsibility, what we feel is responsibility on our and our own reputation. And so we would not want to do this year by year, but it's, you know, we would not be asking for a decade of guaranteed these sites. Like I said, our goal is to decrease homeless population by quite a bit and get them housed, get them employed, get them stable.
Jack, Councilor Savage, we're at nine-thirty. So thank you. We appreciate.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor Mary. Well, do we have a consensus to extend?
Okay.
So thanks so much for coming. This, the discussion of our timeline is the funding on a timeline. So I mean, as far as how in its longevity?
Oh, oh, no. So the funding that we operate by is year over year. And so with this, the, we've divided what would be basically setup funds. And then also ongoing funds and we discussed that with the county and the state, just as a here, here's what we would need year over year versus here's what we would need to set this up. And so those, those conversations have they had? But like any nonprofit, our, ours is sadly year over year. We trust us. We wish it was longer. But the thing is, is with our reputation and with our connection and relationship with the state and also just our accountability, monthly, we send all of our data to the county. And we feel that that's really important. And the city has access to that as well, that we have not had a program that wasn't designated a short-term shut in the homeless site, surprisingly shut short-term.
Okay, we'll do one more question, Councilor Urban. Did you have a question? Okay.
Actually. I just wanted to note that where we are
I just wanted to note that where we are. Was what my father, know where you are in a time and space at all times. And a lot of the issues that we're having, I would attribute to. The no rules, no barriers. No, no accountability situation that we've fostered in in this town. And so when I was first hearing this, you know, you're addressing each of those situations where you're navigating. The. The line that Oregon legislators has set. Having, you know, you're you're kind of checking all of those those boxes to navigate. The ability to actually enforce, go, you know, what we used to be able to have is just the expectation of of the use of public spaces. And how they were intended. So I'm I'm happy about that. It seems that it really does all. Require a live communication mechanism between law enforcement and your sites to do that. And in our current situation, we, to my knowledge, we don't have anything like that, even with available sites. We have to be able to stay up on the enforcement. And. For this to work. And if that can work, then I'm generally. Of the mind that we should try, we should do this. Although watching very closely and I appreciate some of the other questions about, you know, what if we get overrun? You know, and I do, and so that's one of my questions. What will, what will the impulse of Saint Vincent Paul be? When we expand past those those boundaries, what? If and when we do.
I would say that our immediate, just like, I know I keep saying it, but funding. Working with the county who's aware and especially with our our communication, constant communication with the county. They'll be understanding real time updates about the situation, about what's going on. And I think that they'll be incredibly willing to work with us, work with you all to adapt if needed. I understand the fear and I understand that, you know. The stats, I we, I haven't done those surveys, so I I, there are pieces of them that I'm I'm sure are fair to call into question. But. Everything I've said is is just it 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 works and. We we provide shelter to you in a certain way. And if this is, we would be saying the same thing to to anyone and we often do. And and we often get called harsh, we often get, we get called things that I think. Just just shows that we we do things differently from from a lot of other groups. And we are always willing to pivot and adapt. I I know that doesn't really answer the question.
Well, can you assure, can you build into the expectation a live data communication mechanism? On a, on space availability?
Oh, for sure. So we actually, we are one of the main leaders on the Lane County Shelter Finder. And so what that means is that we track every day at Dust to Dawn at four ten and at our three ten location. What shelters are available that day? And so we have police drop off individual, tracking that and dropping off individuals. Actually, often it's been a little close because we'll we'll update a number, someone will come in and be talking with us. And then police can come with, you know, five individuals saying, hey, they're not doing enough to be jailed, but we need, we need a space for them out of the public. Due to public safety, we need a space. And sure enough, we have those spaces open. So that is, that is a tool and we've also have a bunch of internal tools that we share directly with law enforcement. So yeah, that is, that is, I have an easy answer for that one. The other one in terms of, I'm I'm not a fortunate, I don't know if there will be a sudden influx. Although just everything that I've seen and that they're working closely in that field with with everyone. We we are not concerned about that, but if we we are purposely building out more spaces. Then we feel is immediately needed, just in case of something like that.
Council Flack.
Well, I think our attorney had a comment. Oh, the time.
That you get to increase, when you hit your time limit, you increase by in thirty minute increments.
Thank you. So the other thing is, it sounds like we need to give staff direction on this. So it sounds like this needs to, if we're interested, it sounds like we need to have them work with Saint Vincent to get us something in August. So that that it can actually happen according to their funding, if I'm if I'm understanding correct.
Can I make a proposal? So you have a meeting for more funding. When is that again?
We we don't have a meeting. We're waiting to hear back.
You're waiting to hear back and you're expecting to hear back at like.
July fourteen.
July, and that's just right around the corner.
Yes.
It feels uncomfortable to make decisions without having all the answers, right? So we don't have another city council meeting until August. I would be in favor with calling a special meeting later in July so that we can have that information. And make a better decision or wait till the meeting in August, but that might push it out too late.
We have timing. We are able to, if the final vote is August twelfth, I believe, is that the name? Okay, August twelfth, that would be in time, although the more time you give us, the more we can do as soon as possible. So if that, if the vote goes that way, so.
I'm I'm not in favor of making any decision tonight. I'll tell you that.
Well, let's get more information, you know, let's hear back to see what the funding is. Because you can't tell us what you can do until you have your numbers. And so I don't want to say, yes, let's do something when we don't know what something is, right? That's not.
Sure. I I will say that the the funding stream for the connector site, we have all the funding for highway ninety nine. The funding stream for the connector site is going to be a yes or no for the plan that we showed. So we accounted for everything. The cost to to do some renovations, the buildings, the AC. So it, yeah, yeah. I know it doesn't really answer.
Council Flack.
So it sounds like the second meeting in August would not be soon enough. So it does sound like a special meeting, if we need more time to talk, might be in order. So that we still have time to hit that August twelfth meeting with whatever our decision.
I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
I think some sort of even a work session so we could go over and look at what's being offered. And really have some in-depth conversation.
I like.
And maybe even with some community input.
Do we want to try to find a date?
I was going to say, okay, your honor and members of the council. You know, we canceled our second meeting in July because that's night of the Eugene Symphony. It's on a Monday night. Would people be available on the Tuesday night after that for a special meeting? Now, we certainly have the city recorder poll the council, but just, you know, straw poll at this point, would people be available on that Tuesday night? Because by by then you would know, you know, for sure that you had your funding for the connector site and be a chance for additional discussion.
All right. Thank you so much, Jeff. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to our last item. Twenty twenty five, twenty six, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities Staff Report by Mr. Sauerwine.
Included in your packet is a list of the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities. What we had asked each of you to do was to list your top five priorities. And we'll then convert that into a table and bring it back to you for a council ultimate approval. But do you want to? Uh, walk, just walk through with each person or how do you want to, how do you want to do it?
Do we have time if they submitted their their rankings to compile it and then bring it back? In order for the submission, I think the submission is in September, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that?
It, does that work for council? You can just give me what you what you brought this evening. I'll compile them all with the rankings and then we can get it on the next agenda for a final decision.
Absolutely.
Everyone agree?
And and also, your honor, in in the interest of time, the hours late. I would suggest that we move the department director reports to the August twenty sixth council meeting. And I apologize for the folks who've been sitting here the entire time waiting to do their presentation. But I think just in the interest of giving them the the do, the time they're due.
Okay, concerns from council. Council Flack.
Uh, thank you. So there's been a lot of testimonies made around the unhoused in our situation. And I I've said many times, I get the frustration. I guess I just really hope that we're having conversations that are fact based. And as such, I've actually created a website and I'm going to share that with you. It's counselorfleck.com. And on it, there is a recall discussion tab that actually has links to many different spots. I welcome you to read it. If you disagree, please challenge me. But I've tried to be as factual and informational as possible around the stuff and where we've gone. I will be, Mindy, I will be here tomorrow because I could not log in to the CIS page for some reason. But you know, as I get information, I'm going to try to update it and give more information. And for those running for council, you know, coming up to the podium and spewing stuff that's not fact. Is going to get you targeted. You know, I don't even remember, maybe our city public works director does. The last time we had a violation from DEQ with our wastewater plant. You know, this has been a really long time and that was from a heavy rain event where we couldn't keep up. I would say it's been at least ten or fifteen years. I don't quote me because that is not fact, that's guess. But but why bring up something if you don't know the truth or the facts? You know, that's what the citizens demand of us up here. I don't expect people to agree, but if you want to debate, debate me with fact. Come, come at me and give me fact and let's have a conversation that's built on truth. And and what is in the citizen's best interest. Then I'll have respect for you and then I'll actually be willing to, you know, have a dialogue. But unfortunately, sometimes our passions get the better of us, myself included. I offered a, an apology to Mr. Holloman this week that, you know, I lost my temper and so I'm human and I get it. But I think it's time for all of us to take a deep breath and step back and try to come up with a solution that works. I'm super excited. I am actually just kind of shocked nobody else is that we have a plan that makes sense. That's going to hold folks accountable and is going to be paid for. I mean, I'm really trying to find the downside of this and I'm sure there will be some that will. Once again, bring it, bring it fact based and let's have that discussion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Savage. Thank you, mayor. When we were having our budget committee conversations, we were talking about mowing the disc golf course. And I had somebody approach me saying whoever mowed the disc golf course is amazing. It is the best played course in Lane County right now. And so, Mr. Stewart, would you please thank your staff? You're getting big kudos. There were conversations in public testimony about needing more. Police to help staff and maintain what's going on in Cottage Grove. Something that we talked about in the budget meeting was the police onboarding time. And Chief Chase, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to pull the cobwebs out of my brain. And see if I can remember that it takes approximately seven months. So we have folks, is that right? Give or take, if we were to hire somebody tomorrow, it takes about seven months for them to be able to walk through the door and start working. Closer to nine, okay. So we are actively working towards being better staffed. There's been a lot of turnover, but I think it's actively being worked on. So there's positive things happening. So that's really exciting. It's just kind of a slow moving cog. I like the idea. Somebody said citizen review boards. I was taking notes. I like the idea of citizen review boards, but I think there needs to be lots of demographics. And, you know, that's, I'm curious about that. That's a great idea. We just had the ad hoc street committee. And I think that that was really successful. And then for accounting transparency, there's conversation about accounting transparency. I think in the last budget meeting, we talked about having line items specified in the twenty five, twenty four, twenty five budget. It hasn't been done before, so we can't really go backwards, but going forwards, we can line item things. So there's a little bit better transparency in the budget. So I mean, things are happening. It's just a slow moving cog. So I just wanted to point those out. Thank you.
Um, yes, I know there's been a lot of passion and discussion and real. Real concern about our community tonight and I appreciate everybody coming out. I do just want to speak up for my three colleagues that are being threatened with recall. I've only known them to serve honorably and try to try their best to make the decisions for the good of the whole. And so I want to focus on their their integrity. You're going to have a decision to make. This in July about to recall or not. I would just urge you to, let's, let's deal with our situation at at the ballot box. Rather than through a recall effort. I know some of the charges like that have been batted about are factually untrue. And I wanted to point that out, that I, I don't mind lying, but I hate inaccuracy, as Samuel Butler once said. There were two things mentioned in the articles of recall. That two of the counselors voted to raise the utility rates. Actually, it was every sitting counselor and the mayor who voted to raise the utility rates. Where we have enterprise funds, the idea is they break even is the idea. We have to plan for failure, a twelve inch water line just blew up on West Main at R. I mean, things break, generators fail, clarifiers fail, millions of dollars. So you have to put away the reserves, you have to pay for the past debts and you have to deal with rising costs. So every sitting counselor and the mayor voted to raise the utility rates based on the advice of our consultants. That is the due diligence of being on the council. A second charge that was leveled was that two, three of the counselors voted to hire. An independent recruiter for the city manager at eighteen and a half thousand. Again, every sitting counselor and the mayor voted that exact same thing. I'm wondering why colleagues are being called out for something we all did. We should all be recalled if that's the charge. So again, I like, I like the idea of being in the truth and dealing in facts. And yes, we all agree that we got to do something different for our unhoused and our citizens. And I'm hopeful that we can work out something with Saint Vincent de Paul. Thank you.
Right. Business from the city manager. Mr. Sauerwine.
Well, good evening, your honor. Just one quick item. I'm going to ask Fay to give you a quick update on the gas tax and property tax local optional levies. As was recommended by the ad hoc street improvement committee.
Mayor, thank you, city manager Sauerwine. So this past week, myself, Mr. Sauerwine and Ms. Conley met. I just wanted to fully understand the process moving forward as to what the city council is going to need to take action on. At the August twelfth meeting. So I'm preparing at the present time, resolution and documents for a ballot measure. For the citizens to consider a six cent per gallon gas tax increase. And the second item is a fifty cent per thousand five year bond measure for street improvements. And I will have both of those items prepared with all the necessary documents for the council to consider. To direct placing those on the ballot. Once that's completed, then we will need to file, I believe it's two eight oh, two forms, one for each of those measures. That have explanatory statements and various different other requirements that I'll work with our city recorder on to get, should, make sure that they're filed. The other item is, is we hired Jake Power Ryan Associate, Associates, Power Ryan Associates. To work on creating the factual information. We have kind of a rough draft or I I do of the fifty cent. Property tax measure to tweak on. So I I hope to have all those pieces completed by the middle or the end of July. um, by the middle or the end of, um, July. And to ensure that we have all the factual information that if the council chooses to place these two items on the ballot, everything's ready um, for and completed that the city can do at that point. Uh, uh, after that, then it's just being able to inform citizens of the factual information about those two items that they'll be making a decision on.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I would conclude my report, your honor. Thank you very much.
All right. There's nothing else. We'll go ahead.
Do we need to respond to Mr. Stewart's, are you reas- asking for direction or, or urgency or this?
Decision on our part.
At this time, no, unless, uh, the council, the majority of the council says, no, Fay, you're wasting your time. Stop preparing these. My, I wanted to tell you that I fully anticipate on August twelfth, you'll have those two items to consider and make a decision on whether to move them forward or to table them.
Well, absolutely. That was the, the full support of the ad hoc street committee was these very items. Good. Thank you.
All right. With that, this meeting's adjourned.